Okay, then I'll call this City Commission Harlingen Workshop, which has been duly posted to order, and go to Citizen Communication. Is there any Citizen Communication?
I have none today, Neil. I have none.
All right, then the next item is, the item on the agenda is, one, to hear presentations from the following firms regarding performance auditing services. Okay?
Mayor, members of the Commission, before we get started, I had talked to the city attorney about adding booth management. They were left out of the announcement. He said it was okay. It was just a workshop. So there's going to be three firms presenting today. Booth Management will be going first. Erneston Young chose not to do it through Zoom. They asked if they could come in person, so they're downstairs and they'll be making the second presentation. And then Baker Tilly will be presenting third. Over here? Okay, yeah, I talked to them. They know that they're going to have to go downstairs and we'll call them back up. And so the first firm is already on Zoom. They're Booth Management.
Okay, I just had a question about, I thought when we met on this the last time the Commission voted, that the next time we took this up, that the Commission was going to rank the firms.
And that's the item on the regular agenda?
No, that's-
As I recall, there was a vote on that. We voted that we were going to rank the firms.
You're correct, Mayor. There was an, there should have been an item that places on the agenda by two Commissioners, and that inadvertently, there was miscommunication on my part and City Secretary's part, so we added this without the signature. So what I did was I took the two highest ranked firms that staff had done initially, and they're added on this presentation, and the Commissioners that had requested this wanted Erneston Young to make a presentation, so that's how that came about.
All right, well, if nobody-
Well, I have some questions. Remind me again, why are we doing this?
Commissioner, this was something that the Commission had wanted, to have firms present, to conduct a performance audit. We just need to know what specifically there are to do before we negotiate a contract. And then, once we know the direction of the audit, we can, staff can negotiate with the actual firm and come back to you guys and figure out if that's something that you still want to carry through.
Yeah, so my concern was that it seemed like there was a decision that was made outside the meeting, because the last time we talked about this, the Commission was going to rank them and then decide who to invite. And now, the next thing that happens is, instead of that happening, we have, someone has selected two or three of the firms, or one firm, or whoever, however many. I'm not fussing at you at all, but let's go ahead and move forward. We only have an hour, so let's hear-
I still have questions. So, but why, why is the City Commission doing this?
Commissioner, I don't know what the extent of the audit is to be. I'm going to wait for direction, whenever there is an action item at the regular City Commission meeting, to see what it is that these firms are supposed to do. Staff initially went out for RFQs at the direction of the City Commission, and we got these firms that responded. Staff is not aware of what their purpose to do is until we get direction from the Commission during the regular Commission meeting.
Okay, and then you said one Commissioner ranked the firms and liked Erneston Young?
No, no, staff did.
Oh, staff liked Erneston Young?
Yes.
Well, actually, the staff member that ranked the firms was the city auditor, Danny Coyle, because we, because the Commission also asked him to do that.
Yes.
And I know, and he submitted that, but in terms of the rest of the Commission having an opportunity to rank them, I didn't, I haven't seen that happen, other than perhaps outside the presence of a meeting.
And what I did was, not having any type of ranking system, I used what staff had done internally, to pick the two highest and then the other firm that-
Okay. All right, well, then your recommendations, we start with Ernston Young?
No, start with Booth Management. Booth Management?
Okay.
They're the ones that are up on the screen. So whenever you're ready, you can start. You've got 10 minutes, and then five minutes for question and answers.
Okay, so I'm gonna, good afternoon. My name is Robin Booth. I'm sharing my screen now, off of the presentation. We recognize, thank you first of all for the opportunities to make this presentation. On the call with me, I have Peter K. Bryan, who is the proposed Senior Manager. Maria Sanchez, our Audit Manager, Shakina Rollins, and Dara Madamazoo. We're gonna, today we're just basically going to extrapolate some key information from our proposal and response to your request for services relative to performance audits, specifically. In the RFP, you indicated the types of audits that you were soliciting, and our firm, we've been providing these services for approximately 22 years. We are a small, woman-owned business with approximately 162 employees. Our corporate headquarters are in Maryland, however, we have established office in Texas. Based on our, we've had a lot more activity and a lot more contracts in Texas. It's actually one of our key target areas. So accordingly, we are cert, we have filed for our historically underutilized business certification in Texas, as well as the woman-owned small business certification. So we're, both of those certifications are pending. As it relates to the requirements of your contract, from being able to financially perform on the contract, to the various insurances, does this slide demonstrate we have all of the required insurances? We are a licensed CPA firm, having successfully passed the CPA, I'm sorry, the peer review firm audit on multiple occasions, and we have between line of credit facilities and just working capital, more than adequate to provide these services. Just some backdrop on our experience in Texas. We're currently working with the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs on work very similar to what is sought under this solicitation. We are also working with the City of Houston and recently have been awarded multiple contracts in the state of Texas, providing performance audit work. The requirement from the solicitation, you're looking for on-call performance audits in the areas of financial compliance, operational investigative. Those were the key types of performance audits that were included in the solicitation, and we recognize that these are on-call, based on the needs or requests from the Mayor and the various commissions. Having worked on similar engagements where it is on-call, we've established a task order process, to the extent that as needs are being identified and you provide information on the scope of work that you're looking for, we then were able to provide a budget, the estimated hours, and the level of effort, so that you all can make informed decisions on an audit-by-audit basis, consistent with the requirement. Our experience providing similar work, as you can see from this slide, we have a lot of federal government experience, having done hundreds of performance audits issued by various offices of Inspector Generals, and as you all know, they're public, they're publicly, they're published publicly. So fortunately, we do have a lot of our audits that are available to the general public. On the state level, we've been doing audits for the state of Maryland, for Mississippi, as I said, similar work for the state of Texas, and we actually audited for the federal government, various states and local city municipalities. Our overall process, we always believe it's important to have what we think are the key areas of concern relative to, for the key areas to be successful. It always starts off with a good contract kickoff meeting, to understand what both parties are agreeing to, what the expectation for the requirement is. And then we have a strong task order award management. We take things like conflict of interest, nondisclosure, various, very important. As I previously stated, we are a peer-reviewed firm, and meet the requirements for continuing professional education under generally accepted government auditing standards, GAGIS requirements, as well as other state regulatory requirements, from ASHTO to other requirements. So we take our conflict of interest, our independence, and our nondisclosure very seriously. We, prior to, even prior to COVID, we have consistently, our project tools and systems are all web-based or in secured environments, so we've utilized technology to be able to provide high-level auditing work programs, electronic work papers, project management. All of our work is encompassed in a project management system that all of our team and staff members have access to, and that really allows us to ensure we meet deadlines and we have the various flow of quality control and understanding the various iteration of reports, as they're going from draft to final to ultimately issuing. Communication, we believe, is strongly important, so we've come up in our proposal, we discussed further, our communication plan, to make sure that the city is involved, to make sure our audit team is communicating with those that have requested the audit, to ensure we meet your expectations. And needless to say, risk mitigation. We identify risks early on in the process, and throughout the process, we maintain a risk control log, so that if issues arise, we make sure we bring them to your attention as soon as possible, and then work to resolve them to minimize the risk. This slide just gives you an overview of our project tools, from our project management system, which is web-based, to our knowledge base. We keep all pertinent directives, work programs, reference tools. We have training videos for our staff that we, to ensure consistency throughout our performance audit, as well as a strong library. We use electronic work papers. Our accounting and job costing system allows us, is electronic, so that all time is being, actual time being charged is readily available, and this will help us to meet the cost controls and as it relates to any budgets or firm fixed-price engagements relative to performance audits. And we have one-stop communications from, like everybody else, virtual and remote, but we do have 24/7 help desk services, and that's because we have staff, not just on the East Coast, but on the West Coast as well. So although we are a small firm, we actually operate from the East to the West Coast. So from a task order, as I said, our task order management system is automated, so from the receipt of a request, you all identify an area where you would like a performance audit. From the receipt of that, what we're calling a task order, we then provide you with, if it requires a technical proposal or an audit approach, on how we would achieve that objective of the audit, as well as the associated costs, so you can make an informed decision. And then at that point, we actually can go through the task order execution, where we complete the audit, and we do a task order closeout, so that we can make sure that whatever the initial budget was and deliverables were, we have a closeout process to verify that we've met not just the budgetary goals, but the deliverable goals as well. As a, just our core audit team, because on any on-call audit service, you have your core team, which is comprised of your audit managers, your senior managers, as well as our project coordinator, and then our technical writer, because writing the report is critical and key to having a successful final deliverable. So our core team, all on the call as we speak, but this team would be involved in any audits that were awarded on the task order. As it relates to our bench or our capacity to actually perform the audit, and this slide will kind of tell you how many, not from the audit positions, how many people we have currently available that are full-time employees, and what would be their qualifications and education. Anytime you have an on-call effort, you have to be able, as I said, the core team, but then have the capacity to meet any increases in volume or workflows or fluctuations. Overall strategy, from our post-awards, to insurance, to ensuring we have the correct general audit procedures, to negotiating or determining, depending on the type of performance audit, what those specific audit procedures, as well as we talked about our process for expedited audit requests. That's a part of what's in our technical write-up for our solicitation. We work with many agencies that need, especially investigative, where they may need an almost immediate turnaround, and we have a strong process to be able to meet those needs and those resulting deliverables. This goes back to our ability to have bench staff and to have the capacity to respond timely. Quality control is key, so with any, we would have a quality control plan specifically for this contract, based on the type of work being performed in the proposed staffing. And I've already discussed how we ensure that we have the 40 hours minimal annually of CPE hours, consistent with GAGIS. Just from an on-call, for any audit, we would have an audit plan. It's required to have an engagement letter under GAGIS. We would work with you with the initiation and notification process, depending on the type of performance audit being performed. We would always have an entrance conference. Our overall audit approach is risk-based approach, so we're going to do a risk assessment, and based on that risk assessment, we'll determine the nature, timing, and extent of our sampling. And ultimately, whatever we agree to as the reporting requirements, for all of our reports to be consistent with GAGIS, and that we would have an objective scope in the results. So in summary, why select us? We have the experience that's required for this solicitation. We have experience working with federal office of Inspector General Offices, as well as Controller's Offices and Audit Offices. We receive excellent and very good ratings on our various rating systems for federal government, and our whole approach is agile and technology-based. Also, I think it's important to mention that we are a small disadvantaged minority and woman-owned business, and we're actively recruited and hiring employees in Texas. So I thank you for this 10 minutes you all have provided us to kind of summarize our proposal, and if there are any questions, I believe there's five minutes for questions, if there are any.
Yes, ma'am, we have two questions. Have you spoken to any City Commissioners prior to this meeting?
City Commissioners in the City of Harlingen?
Yes.
Harlingen? No, not at all.
Okay, okay, and what is your entrance fee, should you get the contract? What does it cost us upfront?
Um, we, the way that these proposals were set up, there's no, we provided labor hours and rates, so there's no set fee. It would all depend on what performance audit you requested, and at that time, we would provide you with the level of effort and the fees associated with that particular audit. So we just provided labor hours and rates.
Okay, so, so your fees, your fees are different on what type of audit? Do I hear that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because you all, yeah.
May I have a range of those fees?
It depends on, I mean, that's a tough question, because you all have financial, if I could go back, you all have financial compliance and, there you go, operational audit. So an audit could be as low as $5,000 for the audit, to, if it's, if it's a financial statement audit, it may be up to $10,000 to $15,000 in audit. That's, that's, I mean, it's difficult, because this is an on-call performance audit, so you only, we only do audits based on your request, and you all get to negotiate the level of effort, the hours and the rate. The hours, the rates are what we had to commit.
And then how far back do you routinely go, and how far back can you go in time?
It depends, when, it depends on the type of audit. If you're talking financial, that varies. Usually it's within the last year or two. If you're talking investigative, that could be based on something that became, I can give you an example. We had an state's Attorney General have identified an issue within the agency, and they had us do an investigative audit that went back five years, and that's, and we found some fraud, waste, and abuse. So it depends on the type of audit.
Okay, of course. I'm just curious, because two city managers ago, there was embezzlement of about $400,000 by that internal auditor, two internal auditors ago, and the city manager did nothing about it and destroyed that computer of that employee. Is that something you could deal with, or is this too long?
That's the, the example I just gave you was an example of, it went back about five or six years, but it was an example-
Yeah, this is about nine years or so ago.
Yeah, it depends on availability of documentation, too.
Okay, thank you for answering my questions, ma'am.
Not a problem.
Does anybody have any other questions for Ms. Moore, Ms. Booth? Okay, Ms. Booth, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you for being with us this afternoon.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon.
Mayor, the next presenters are Erneston Young.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
You'll have 10 minutes for a presentation and five minutes for question and answers.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, my name is Ryan Pratt. I'm here representing Ernston Young, or better known as EY. I'm a principal in our Forensic and Integrity Services practice. I've been with the firm for over, for nearly 20 years. I'm here with my colleagues, Neil Masterson, who's a managing director in our business consulting practice, and Mona Ruppani, who is a Senior Manager in our Forensics practice. So we're here to follow up on our proposal in response to your request for performance audit and forensic services. We believe we're, EY is uniquely prepared to serve the City of Harlingen for three main reasons. One, the strength of our firm that we bring to the city. Two, the strength of the team that we bring to this process and the skill sets involved. And three, the approach that we'll bring to the audit process to make it more efficient so you can maximize the impact that it has on the city. EY is one of the largest global professional services in the world with over 300,000 professionals across audit, tax, consulting, and strategy. In the U.S., we have a dedicated practice for internal audit and forensic services with over 7,000 professionals. These professionals bring a wealth of experience across all sorts of internal performance and forensic audits. And in Texas, we're one of the largest professional services firms with over 5,800 professionals, and we've been in Texas for over 100 years. So what does that mean to the city? It means that engaging with EY affords you a unique opportunity to access thousands of subject matter resources to address virtually any issue that may come up in an audit. We also have the flexibility with our resources in Texas to scale up or down, to meet the city's needs as it goes through its audit program. And what this allows us to do is make the process more efficient, helps control cost, and also the level of efforts that's required in these audits. Very few other professional services firms provide this level of access and scalability. So now, turn it over to Mona and let her talk about our team.
Thanks, Ryan. Hi, my name is Mona Ruppani, and I'm a Senior Manager in our Houston office. I have over 10 years of experience performing performance audits, including investigations and compliance matters. As Ryan mentioned, we are confident that we've assembled the right team to meet the City of Harlingen's, you know, current priorities as it relates to performance audit services, but also to provide meaningful insights as you consider shaping your priorities in the future. The team leaders we have here today are experienced in performing a variety of performance audits, including compliance, investigation, and financial audits. Whatever type of audit you decide, we'll work with you first to define your objectives and understand your expectations in terms of timing and deliverable. We'll then take that information to make sure that we're positioning the right team members with the right experience and knowledge. As Ryan mentioned, we could design an audit with as few as three team members, or scale up to what you need at the time. Further, we'll seek out opportunities to strategically leverage our subject matter resources across the breadth of the firm. This means, for example, we have technology resources that are very familiar with extracting data from a variety of systems and servers and devices, and we can use that information to extract data efficiently and design data analytics that will enable us to perform more effective assessments for you. Further, to the extent that you look to do a more targeted technical assessment, for example, on a specific grant program or a specific capital project, we have resources within the firm that we can leverage that have experience in construction, public and private partnerships, as well as, you know, federal government experience from the OIG and so forth. And throughout each of our audits, we'll be positioned to support you with the right resources that are continuously providing emerging practices from our breadth of experience in both the public and private sectors. We've assembled a combined cross-functional team that is ready to work with you as you seek to make further compliance and integrity improvements throughout the city. And with that, I'll pass it on to Neil, who's going to go into a little more detail about the right process that we've designed.
Thank you, Mona. Hi, I'm Neil Masterson. I'm the Managing Director with EY based in Austin. I have over 26 years of experience in audit and controls. The slide I have here is a bit of a snapshot of our approach to doing internal and performance audits, and there's a lot of detail on the slide, but I'll highlight a few areas that we think will be of most benefit to the city. First of all, is that we are flexible. Our methodology supports that we take a very flexible approach and dynamic approach to planning each audit, and what that means is, an audit can be something very short, like a virtual, quick desktop review, all the way to the other end, which would be an end-to-end deep dive of a process, where we go and do lots of interviews, lots of data analytics, as Mona mentioned, and also some sample testing. The flexibility of our methodology allows us to really provide the right scope for each of your engagements and tailor it to your risk appetite and also to your budget. We also bring innovation. Because we perform so many audits as a firm and we have so many professionals, it's really easy for us to get to the subject matter resources that we need, and also the leading practices that we can bring to bring more value to each audit project. We also bring data analytics. We use facilitated brainstorming sessions that are anonymous, and we have other tools that can bring more innovation and insight to each individual audit. So the results of these approaches and these tools that we have are greater insights for you and for the city. And you'll notice that this methodology is somewhat circular in nature, and that's on purpose. The insights that come out of each audit are really meant to inform the city and the Commission in a number of ways. One, it helps you to prioritize what are the action items that you need to take coming out of each audit, and how do you really prioritize, based on risk, what needs to be done. It also informs the broader enterprise risk posture of the city as well, and gives you that broader view. And then it certainly informs us in the audit process, so it helps us to continually improve based on what we've learned, and also gives us insights on what future audits might be most relevant to you all. So, and then back to flexibility, we are also very flexible in terms of how you can work with us. So if you choose to engage us for specific performance audits with very targeted scopes, we can certainly do that. Or, as many of our clients request, we can actually do a risk assessment using internal data, using some external benchmarks, and really bring you some insights into what would be the highest-performing, highest-value audits back to the city. And so that's another common approach that we take. We're very flexible in how we work with you all to support your needs. So as you can tell, we're very passionate about internal audit and how, and performance audits, and how that can really improve the control environment of our clients. So we appreciate you hearing out our passion here, and with that, I'll pass it back to Ryan.
Thanks, Neil. So with that, we just want to, you know, say we're very appreciative of you inviting us here today. us here today and letting us respond to your RFP. And that concludes our comments, so we'll open it up to questions.
I have questions if I may. The, I'm well familiar with your firm.
Okay.
Is there a cost to walk in the door?
Well, we're here, and we're not charging you anything.
Okay, and then how do you charge the city?
So what we do is, we will work with you to build a plan for what you want an audit to be. So if you say, "I want to do a performance audit here, I want to do a forensic review there," we'll meet with you to set a scope up, and once we have that scope agreed to, we'll provide you an estimate, a budget for what that entails, and that will be our "not to exceed" without your approval. So we'll provide you that scope and that budget, and here's what we think the number of hours it's going to take. And then as we work through that, and that will be kind of our approach and how we charge. So we're not going to charge you to pick up the phone to ask a question.
And then, how far back do you go?
How far back do we go?
In auditing?
Well...
This city?
This city?
Yes.
We've never audited this city.
No, 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 I mean, you got the contract, how, what's your look-back period in activity?
Yeah, that's typically defined as part of the scope and, you know, really what the priorities of the city are. So we have, you know, recommendations for that based on, you know, the type of audit that's being performed, but it's not prescriptive, per se.
Okay, and then, who will you directly communicate with?
We will direct, well, we will directly communicate based on who the project manager is for each audit. So if an audit is being held by the commissioners, we would report to the commissioners. If it's being asked by, you know, the mayor or someone else, we would report to them. But typically, what will happen is, there will be an assignment of a project manager, and we'll interact with that project manager.
And then, can, you mentioned the city commission. Can any city commissioner ask you to look at any particular area at any time, or does it have to be the plurality of the city commission?
I think that's probably something for you to decide as a commission, and something that would be worked out in whatever contract that we use to engage with, with the city. So that power would probably be better left in your hands.
All right, does anybody have any other questions? All right, we appreciate you being here this afternoon. Thanks for making the trip down.
Absolutely. We very much appreciate it, and, you know, would be happy to work with you all if we're chosen.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Mayor, the last firm is Baker Tilly, they were going to be on Zoom. Okay, welcome to the meeting. You'll have 10 minutes for a presentation, and then 5 minutes for question and answers. So you can begin.
Thank you very much, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. While Stacy's getting our presentation up, I'll introduce myself, I'm David Eisenlohr. I'm a managing director with Baker Tilly in our Dallas office, and with me is our national practice leader for our public sector internal and performance auditing service, and Stacy Gill, out of our Austin office, who works in that practice as well. Stacy, can you share the screen, and I'm going to ask Kyle to take us, to get us started.
Great, well, good afternoon, everyone. Very much appreciate the opportunity to be with you today. We'll be sort of shorten our remarks to make sure we meet the timeline. Again, I'm Kyle O'Rourke, and I lead a lot of our performance audit and internal audit work in the public sector. Stacy, if you want to jump to the next slide. Put names with faces. David went through our introductions. I would just add that I lead many of our projects in the public sector, including our work with the city of Dallas, city of Palo Alto, California, some work with some state agencies here in Illinois. Essentially exclusively serve public sector organizations, including state and local governments. Stacy or David, would you like to add anything to your intros?
I'll just briefly outline myself. I've spent my career, both in consulting and before consulting, in Texas local government. I was a budget analyst in the city of San Antonio, an assistant city manager in Grand Prairie, and then had been doing strategy and operations and organizational improvement, consulting with units of local government in Texas and across the country since then.
And hello, everyone, Stacy Gill. I'm a senior manager in our public sector practice. So I've been with Baker Tilly for about 10 years, and the time that I've been with Baker Tilly, mostly providing risk advisory and process improvement services to my clients. So that's been specifically in the public sector arena. Ultimately, you know, efforts focused around ensuring that our clients are aware of and managing their key risks, and that operations are efficient and in alignment with strategy. So my role on this would be serving as the overarching project manager and key contact from the Baker Tilly side. So, thank you for this opportunity. I'll, yeah, hand it over to you, Kyle.
Great. Really, the gist of this slide is that Baker Tilly is a large firm. We feel that we're also right-sized and the right size for you all. You'll see a lot of numbers on here, but ultimately, on projects like this, we look to bring the full power of the firm to bear for you all. So you'd be served primarily by the folks on the line today, but as new needs arise, we'll bring in some of these 4,600 team members to make sure we're meeting your needs. Instruction audit specialists, IT audit specialists, and the like, and we'll get into more of that as we go here. In terms of our Texas credentials and our office footprint in Texas, on the next slide here, we have some important data points. We have six offices in the state, we have over 400 professionals, we have a number of years of experience serving in the state, and we have a number of public sector clients in the state of Texas. I mentioned the city of Dallas being a very notable one. Ultimately, what this means is, we have a nationwide firm, we have those 4,600 folks that can serve, but we also have primarily some local government specialists within the state that will be able to service you as a client, and we look forward to having the opportunity to do so.
Right, and just to give you a little overview of, you know, Baker Tilly's approach, I would say, across all of the internal audit and related services that we provide, you know, whether it's as an outsourced internal auditor, or, you know, kind of a co-source partner where we're performing audits at the request of the client, our focus is really on providing value. So for us, instead of having just a check-the-box approach, we really try and go into each audit from a strategic perspective and consider the organization and the culture, and, you know, make recommendations that really fit your priorities and characteristics. So, just to say, you know, one of the common things that we do hear from our clients is that they enjoy working with us. So, you know, audits are never fun for the audit team, but we've got a team that's personable and knowledgeable, so we're really able to, you know, make the process as painless as possible, and we're able to provide that independent assurance without being intimidating. And our approach is grounded in best practices and standards. So that would include Yellow Book, that includes Red Book, which is the Institute of Internal Auditors, IPPF, the AICPA, COSO, on the IT side, NIST, COVID, and of course, the list goes on there. Our team within public sector advisory is required to fulfill Yellow Book requirements for governmental-related trainings each year. And we use tools and templates throughout each phase of our audits, which have been developed, you know, to facilitate compliance with these very standards.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Stacy. So, this slide is just intended to show the breadth and the depth of our capabilities, from very traditional focus areas of audits through organizational performance improvement, which we understand, performance audit is your principal objective here, but we have the capabilities to really dive into any area of concern that the commission or the management of the city might have, whether that's cybersecurity, fraud and forensics, construction, capital program, auditing, or financial management. So we're really a full-service, broadly capable of meeting the kinds of needs that a municipality of your size might undertake under this kind of a program. Next, Stacy, sorry. So, just the next couple of slides, and I'll be careful not to read to you, but I wanted to give you just some, a snapshot of some of the examples of similar organizations, cities or municipally operated utilities, and the kinds of functional areas that we have done work in, and it's finance, and administration, and human resources, and public works, and parks, and police, and fire. We've got experience in virtually every local government service that you provide, and have done a variety of things in those areas, whether it's structure, or staffing, or process, or technology-oriented. Our team has the capabilities to really cover the waterfront in this, in your industry and for your needs. Next slide. So, it's my job to sort of wrap this up, and I think we're ahead of time a little bit. We know you have a choice to make, and our job is to make the case that we're your best choice. I say this, Kyle alluded to this a little bit, you're seeing three of us, but our team is exceptional. We have a team of consultants that are fully dedicated to the public sector, that's what they eat, sleep, and breathe, and do so in a very, very responsive, collaborative, even collegial way. We have documented methodologies and approaches that make sure that we're all together on the same page, both client and staff, in terms of the work we're going to do and the timeline that we're going to do it on, and we will deliver on time and on budget. We've sort of said this several ways before, but we know local government, it's what we do. We've got people like myself, who have been in leadership roles in local government, we've got decades of experience collectively, serving cities across the country. And Kyle also alluded to this, we are a large, substantial firm, ninth-largest of our type in the country, but we operate and bring to our clients an intimacy, if you will, of a small, local firm kind of experience. We're very responsive and very, very focused on meeting your goals, your needs, where you are. And the last thing is, we're ready to go. So as soon as, as soon as you make the decision, we'll be prepared to roll up our sleeves and go to work. So with that, we'd love to answer any and all questions.
Yeah, I have a few questions, this is Mesmar. Is there a cost for you to enter the door, should you get the contract?
No, sir. My understanding is that, at the time we're awarded the contract, we will be available to you to begin projects that the commission, or the commission in consultation with the city manager, decide are where your most important needs are. So there's not a subscription fee or a pay-to-play kind of arrangement. We'll develop a budget and a task plan, and we'll agree on the scope of that project that you want us to perform, and then we'll invoice you with, excuse me, when we start doing work.
And then how do you charge? Is this an hourly fee, or what?
You know, that can vary by the type of engagement. Most of our engagements are fixed professional fees. So we will agree on the scope of work, and we'll attach a price to it, and we'll deliver that scope and those deliverables for the agreed price. Kyle, do you want to weigh in on that a little bit?
I agree with what you said, David. I think to the first question, there's, from time to time, certain ramp-up costs, so, for example, you might have questions, "Hey, have you ever seen this before? We're dealing with this problem. How can Baker Tilly help? Who do you, what specialist do you have?" Those types of questions and the kind of conversations that ensue, that are pre-statement of work or task order development, we write all those costs off. So not only is there no initial cost for startup, but throughout the life of our relationship, we don't charge you for, you know, the discussions that we need to have in order to identify the projects, who's going to work on them, the scope of work, before we even get to signing sort of a statement of work. That's all I wanted to add.
Should you get the contract, how far back in the city's history do you go back and look at stuff? I mean, is this a one-year look back, three, five, 10 years?
I'll go ahead. I think that that's dependent on the nature of the work that we specifically conduct in the project itself. Typically, we do a 12- to 24-month look back in our work. Going beyond that, there's typically staffing changes, policy changes, potentially even changes to the law, depending on the nature of the work that we're doing, and thus might not provide much value. However, we have, in certain circumstances, gone back five to seven years. It just really depends.
Okay, and then, have you spoken to any city commissioners prior to this meeting?
No, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Baker Tilly? The, thank you for providing some exemplars of your prior performance audits, and the two that I looked at closely were the city of Warsaw, Indiana, which is a city that's a little bit smaller than Harlingen by about half, and then you had kind of, you had one for the city of ABC, a performance audit of ABC Utilities. You had about 10 areas that you did a performance audit on for them. And then I note, on your PowerPoint presentation, you had a citywide internal audit and risk assessment for the city of Lewisville.
That's right.
Which is a city that's a little larger than Harlingen, about 100,000 people, and I was, can you, and those I thought were very well done, can you give us any sort of a range for what the cost was for those particular audits?
Stacy, I think...
I'm not going to hold you to it like, you know, we're not going to hold you to a number, but if you could give us a range to give us an idea of, to sort of compare what you did on these other performance audits and what the cost associated with that was.
So I can do several of these, because I've been directly personally involved. Stacy, if you'd go up, is this our first slide, or go up?
Well, I think, I think David, he's specifically asking about the sample reports that we provided with the proposal. And I guess I don't know for sure for those specific ones, but I would say in general, for, you know, a performance audit, those are usually going to go anywhere from, I don't know, Kyle, on average, from maybe 40,000 to 75,000, depending on the scope. You know, we've done some for less, but, you know, when it's kind of those organization-wide performance audits, where you're looking at multiple departments and multiple areas, you know, it would usually fall in that 40 to 75 range, I would say.
Yeah. Again, if you'd like to know some of the specific ones, I can, the ones that I've directly worked on and led, I can rattle those off pretty quickly, so. So let's go back up a slide, Stacy, find, so, city of Bedford, Texas, we're working there right now, we did a public works study for them, an evaluation, the public works department, that was a $57,000 project. We're there today, looking at, this is all one department, but finance, utility, billing, and municipal court, that's about $50,000. The city of Frisco, Texas, those three different projects there, engineering, public works, development services, those were each in the 50 to $60,000 range. Frisco's a city of about 130,000 population. The next one on the top of the following page, city of Plano, Texas, looking at some of their training and certification requirements in information technology. I think that one was around $40,000. Denton Parks Rec Code Enforcement, in the 30 to $45,000 range.
Very good, thanks, thanks for that, that's very helpful. Okay, are there any other questions for Baker Tilly? All right, well, thank you for participating tonight, that would wrap it up.
That's correct.
Okay, so, thank you very much, and that will conclude the workshop. The city commission meeting will begin in about 10 minutes. Thank you.